...that happened this weekend, I would like to reiterate on behalf of our council and our Human Rights Commission. As your mayor, it is fundamental to me as well as my colleagues on City Council and the Des Moines Human Rights Commission that we create a community culture that promotes peace, justice, and mutual respect. As a group, this council and commission vehemently disagree with the message and the misinformation conveyed by the Texas-based white supremacist group Patriot Front that marched through our East Village community over the weekend. This group sought to advance their agenda of intolerance and prejudice while hiding from the repercussions of their action. Hate-driven ideologies conflict directly with our values as a city. While we acknowledge their First Amendment rights to expose their views, we denounce the statement this group made and the hate-filled rhetoric against our neighbors, no matter where they were born or came from. Both local and state law enforcement were made aware of concerns expressed by residents and will continue to keep the safety of residents in the city of Des Moines at the forefront of their duties. We recognize and appreciate the bipartisan condemnation from political leaders across Iowa who have clearly stated that hate has no place here. In confronting hatred, there are no permanent friends and no permanent enemies, only permanent issues. The permanent issue we must collectively address is to drive out hate in all its forms, ensuring Des Moines remains safe and a welcoming city for everyone. We join in support of all people who live here and believe that everyone deserves to be treated with respect. If you need our assistance, please contact the appropriate city officials. And with that, we just want to make sure that everyone knows that we will do everything we can to make sure our community is safe and tolerant and we and treat people with respect. And with that... So, and we have another quick announcement for someone who attends almost every City Council meeting. Garland, happy birthday. And with that, we will take the roll.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonsen.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And I will just say on this one, we have Item 45 has been withdrawn by City Attorney for further study, and Item 57 is updated at Speaker's List.
Move approval.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is number three, approving consent agenda. Those are Items 3 through 47. These are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests an item to be removed, or to be considered separately. And on the consent agents, we have 4D, Gatto is abstaining, number five, Voss is a no.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Okay.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Absolutely.
We'll now move to Item 48, our hearings. We have a dismissed hearing on vacation of air rights within a portion of 41st Street right-of-way adjoining 4109 University Avenue and conveyance of a permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property to Uptown Partners Corp. for $2,041.
I'll move Item 48.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 49, on approval of a lease agreement with Riley Drive Entertainment 13 doing business as Tonic Bar Des Moines for a portion of the vacated North South Alley right-of-way adjoining 201 Court Avenue for use as a sidewalk café. Will accept germane comments from the general public, two minutes per person, up to 10 minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, I'll move Item 49, and I'll just note I like the sidewalk café concept. More of that, please.
Yes.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 50 is on the 2025 sewer lining program. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as HydroClean LLC, Wade Anderson, President, $3,399,054.54, Council Communication Number 25-076. A is approval of the contract and bond. General public may comment only to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered germane. Two minutes per person, 10 minutes maximum. Anyone wishing to speak?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 50 and 50A.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 51. On East Army Post Road trunk sanitary sewer from southeast 14th Street to Three Lakes Estates. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract document, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designate the lowest responsive responsible bidder as S.M. Henches &amp; Sons Incorporated. Steve M. Henches, President, $4,321,000. Council Communication Number 25-75. A is approval of contract and bond. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor. Long time coming. I'll move 51 and 51A.
Second.
Do you mind just saying how good this is going to be for...
For the southeast portion of the of the city? Yeah, this has been something of a goal of mine for the past 11 years. You know, we've we've had issues with, we've had water out there, but we have no sewer, or we have sewer and we have no water. And that's been the the theme since I've sat down in this chair, and we're finally getting that taken care of. So this is, this is a really big thing for for the southeast quadrant of our of our city.
For the development.
Yeah, and for the roadway. I mean, the roadway is, needs the improvements, as we all well know. So it's the gateway into the into the southeast side, so.
Yeah. You deserved a little victory lap, not just first to pass.
After 11 years?
Because it's huge.
Things take longer than you think sometimes. It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Sometimes, I guess. There is wins.
Think we're...
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 52, on Hamilton Drain Stormwater Improvements Phase Four. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Corell Contractor, Inc., Grant S. Corell, President, $2,198,439.07. Council Communication Number 25-077. A is approval of contract and bond. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, I will move Item 52 and 52A. And I'm also very proud that we are in our final phase of this project. We've been working a long time for it, so thank you.
Great job, absolutely.
It's been moved.
Second.
Okay, moved, seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 53, on Porter Avenue Improvements from Southwest 9th Street to South Union Street. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as TK Concrete, Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, $600,764. Council Communication Number 25-078. A is approval of contract and bond. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 53 and 53A.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries, and that's the end of our hearings at 5:09. Item 54 is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes as follows. Council Communication Number 25-069. Parking modification, 39th Street between Ingersoll Avenue and Woodland Avenue. Parking modification, intersection of Southwest 28th Street, Gannett Avenue and Gannett Avenue and Rittenhouse Street. Parking modification, Grand Avenue between Second Avenue and the Grand Avenue Bridge. D is code correction, East Edison Avenue between South Union and Southeast 2nd Street. E is code correction, East 22nd Street and Milton Avenue. F is code correction, Latell Avenue between Fleury Drive and Army Post Road. G is corner clearance, parking restrictions. East 22nd Street and Ankeny Avenue. East 2 is East 29th Street and Lyon Street. 3 is East 30th Street and Kinsey Avenue.
I'll happen to move Item 54, A through G, and pursuant to Rule 42A, I'd move to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 55 is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code relating to the monthly parking rates for the 1,200 Mulberry City Parking Garage. Council Communication Number 25-070. Does anyone...
I'll move 55. And pursuant to Rule 42A, I will waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, please vote.
Does this mean we can get folks in there?
Get some revenue?
Yeah.
Hope so.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 56 is the direction to the City Manager and City Attorney regarding potential franchise fee increase.
I'm happy to to move this item. I think it's really important for the future of public transit in our community, and this provides us an an opportunity to move forward with alternative funding mechanism. And I know there's a lot of important work going on with the discussions about Reimagine DART and figuring out what that, what the future of transit looks like. By acting on this now and acting today, I think we give the mayor and our representatives at DART the most flexibility for how we, how we effectively go forward with with pursuing this, whether that be creating a reserve or trying new pilots. This provides a lot of flexibility so that we can get to the best possible outcome. And so I'm glad to see us moving forward on this item.
Snuck in.
Okay, any other comments? Councilman coming?
I read the roll call or the document associated with this, and I want to just underscore two things. I've been a part of a lot of that Reimagine DART conversations as the alternate to the board. It's, it's important to say and fair to say, the mayor has provided great regional leadership on this, and I think has asked the tough questions that needed to be asked. So I, I want to thank you for that. You know, a lot of our citizens want us to have a better, stronger DART, and we need a DART that's more sustainable. I think that's happening. I also know that Des Moines has to provide funding to DART. And I vote for this because I want the funding to go to DART. And manager, you mentioned in here that, that, you know, we had some work to do to make sure governance and everything else is, is fair. I just want to underscore this because it's important for this ultimately to, you know, pass or to earn my vote, that if the franchise fee were to create new revenues of $7 million, the DART budget should go up by $7 million. If it creates $8 million, it should go up by $8 million. It shouldn't, what our taxpayers are being asked to spend money on should not be converted to a tax credit or a tax reduction for others. And so I, I appreciate the spirit of your recommendation because it is money for DART, and everything else kind of has to catch up to that.
Thank you. I think that, you know, we know that we want to provide a great transit system, and the whole part of doing reimagine was to look at it differently so that we could give the best service we can to the residents of Des Moines, along with connecting. And I think by everybody coming together and looking at maybe different alternatives or different mechanisms, whether, like you said, different pilot programs, that we can get more people, because we have areas of Des Moines that aren't covered very well either. So that was one of the reasons we felt very strongly that we need to do a reimagine program. So I applaud the DART Commission that has gone ahead. They brought in some true specialists in this area and coming up with some, maybe some different ideas and mechanisms that we can truly get a, a better transit system for all, and because we know many of our residents rely on us. So with that...
By the, by the way, Josh was kind to give us a book when we took our spots, and that author was in town as part of the...
He's the consultant.
Yeah.
He's the main consultant.
Yeah, really, like, really impressive guy, and helpful to have his, you know, fingerprints on this plan.
They're the best. I mean, they're experts, and he's a leader in the transit space, not just in this country, but I think around the world.
And I think he's very honest. He, yeah, sometimes you don't always like to hear what some people tell you, but it's good to hear what options are out there and how we can make it a better system in a, in a community-wide area that's not built for mass transit, quite honestly. You know, we're very car-centric, so it's hard to get from A to B, clear, I mean, A in Des Moines, clear out to B in the suburbs, where it's a very, as we have, people have told us, is a very long trip and sometimes not as reliable as we hope it will be, and hopefully we can bring the best system forward. So with that, I think we have a motion, second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries, and we'll look forward to our City Manager bringing back. Okay, the next item is the request to speak. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each for up to 20 speakers for a total of one hour on the agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their names and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. And thank you for your support of Des Moines. And the first speaker is Kelly Midgordon. Is Kelly here? Chris Felice.
Chris Felice, Assistant Business Manager of Labor's Local 177. 3,400 East Euclid Avenue is the address and establishment in which we work out of. I have the privilege and honor of working for and representing the 1,200-plus members of Labor's Local 177. As a field representative, organizer, and assistant business manager, I have come here today to share our membership's disappointment with the City Council and its lack of movement to improve the language in the city's development agreements. Doing so would help to hold bad actors, bad actor contractors accountable on city-funded construction projects. I had the privilege to sit in the group study this morning, and one suggestion was brought up, the ability to provide a list of subcontractors on the projects that are under this agreement. We feel like this is a simple ask, an ask that wouldn't cost any money, to provide a better level of transparency and awareness in tracking bad actors. Further examples on how this could be beneficial include, but are not limited to wage theft and misclassification of workers, which has become a business model for many non-union contractors in this industry. Increased safety standards, combating tax fraud by including certified payroll to combat cash payments to workers. Further, we are again requesting the council to work with us, the skilled tradesmen and women of the building trades, to give our local contractors and members a better chance to work in the city in which they live in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carolyn Yuland-Hayek Walker. I'm going to need...
The name is Carolyn Yuland-Hayek Walker. I'm at 4111 Ingersoll Avenue, apartment 1110. I also have been for 10 years a member of the Des Moines Citizens Task Force on Sustainability, and I was involved in both the Plan Des Moines, Plan, and the Guide Des Moines. So over the weekend, my fun reading was going back and reviewing these plans to see what in sustainability and in the environment is in these plans. So first of all, the Des Moines Plan was passed also in 2016, and it's basically tells, it says, excuse me, what the community of Des Moines desires the city to lead, to look like by the year 2040. The second one that I also was part of was this Guide Des Moines, which is this strategic plan, which is more of a city council look at the different things. So I went through the plans and came up with all of these words inside both plans or one or the other plan, and they included green infrastructure, greenhouse gas emissions, reduction heat islands, energy efficiency with affordable housing, green building code, lead building, stormwater management, renewable energy, walkable, bikeable, better public transit, urban tree master plan, citizens task force be adopted, and more. So I'm like, oh my gosh, this sounds like our climate action plan that we adopted a year ago. So we had the Climate Action Plan called ADAPT. Everybody can look it up on the website. And I just want to say how important it is that we need the Sustainability Office that right now is very in question to make sure that this Climate Action Plan, but also the Des Moines Plan Des Moines and Guide Des Moines, all those things in all three plans become a priority in our city that we are, so I need and we need back here and the city needs for city council members to be visionary and bring it up because who has a Sustainability Office and a full-time Sustainability Manager? Ames, Iowa, yes. Fairfield, Iowa, yes. Dubuque, Iowa, Iowa City. Urbendale, Iowa, yes, and Cedar Rapids. We need to bring back the, bring back the Sustainability Office, number one, and, I hope I have time, got to find it. Oh, yeah, here it is. In the Vision of the Guide Des Moines, it says, "Des Moines 2031 is a vibrant capital city with great neighborhoods and thriving regional economy and is a recognized leader of the community's sustainability."
Adam Callanan.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. I live in Ward 3. I'm here today with Des Moines People's Town Hall. On sustainability firings, the city's new budget has around 15 positions cut. The only two of those positions cut through firings were the two for the Sustainability Department. When these firings were first known of, the city claimed that other departments would be facing similar cuts. Yet now we know that no other department was cut the way that Sustainability Office was. People's Town Hall submitted a records request and found that the council had been told by the City Manager about these proposed, about the proposed budget, including the firings, at least by December 18th. This contradicts the City Manager's statement that he made the decision on his own in early January. City Council members were instructed not to disclose the firings to others until January, and while this makes sense for HR reasons, I want to point out that that works against any potential to save the positions through grants or outside funding before losing the positions. It also eliminated the potential for public comment on the issue. We also know that as of January 6th, the Sustainability Office was still working on an annual report, just wrapping it up, and yet days later, January 10th, they were fired before they could present their progress and show what they've done. We still have not heard of any alternative plan for sustainability work moving forward. We still have not seen any numbers around how much money we save from the firings as opposed to letting them finish out their contracts. Through other city meetings, we also have learned that while it was initially reported by the register that the DMPC's budget was taking a slight drop this year, it's actually being grown from around 85 million to around 88 million at a time when other departments are being slashed. Another small note on the consent agenda today. Today's consent item 31 seems to have violated Iowa meeting laws by not stating what the City Council was approving. It gave vague authorization to the City Manager and Attorney to do something related to litigation. I'll just read that here now. Now therefore be it resolved that by the Des Moines City Council that the City Manager and City Attorney are authorized and directed to execute an agreement in a matter related to litigation. I just think on all fronts, this is obviously a minor issue, but we just need more transparency from the city, and that's something that should not be difficult to ask for or to achieve by the city.
Carmen Mork.
I'm Carmen Mork. I live at 3805 10th Street. I'm extremely concerned about closing Birdland Pool and appreciated the new budget proposal by City Manager Scott Sanders to keep the pool open through the summer. It's my understanding that his support has been changed and that the recommendation has been rescinded. The north side of Des Moines needs this pool. We may be a lower economic area than other neighborhoods in the city, but we deserve this closure to be reconsidered. I know that the city needs to balance its budget, and Birdland Pool doesn't seem financially sound to keep open, but please, let's find a solution elsewhere. I attended the pool as a child. I chose to buy a house in the north side, and I taught my daughter how to swim there. I'm currently teaching my granddaughter over the past two summers to swim in that pool. I am there twice a week, every week, in the early afternoons, and I observe all the people in the pool. I observe people with all ethnic groups, with either their family or a day camp, but the majority that I observe are minority children. If you could see the look of joy on their faces as they're swimming and jumping off the diving board and playing with the basketball hoop. I understand the filtration system needs an overhaul, and the baby pool has not been repaired in years, which is clearly very expensive, to say the least. If you close our pool without accepting the original suggestions proposed to keep the pool open this summer, our neighborhood loses once again. By not looking into possible private grants from large corporations or even Prairie Meadows, you're giving up on our kids. Our children deserve better from the city than being victims of a budget cut. Please don't let them down. Reconsider keeping the pool open, at least for this summer, so that our community can work with public officials to look for private corporation support to let our kids in our lower economic neighborhood keep swimming.
Okay. We'll visit with clarity after. We'll meet with Carmen after. We have some things to tell you. Okay, Garland Armstrong?
Good afternoon, Garland Armstrong, representing the east side of the second ward. I just would like to know what's the progress so far of the accessible part high beyond Court Avenue, and just would like to know, when is the target completion date of that so that people in mobility's can be able to go right back in there again on the Fifth Avenue side? As you know, the Fourth Avenue only has stairs, so I just would like to know, when is the target completion date of it going to be so that people will say, finally, thanks to me bringing this up to y'all because they really didn't know what they, what, what were they thinking of? So I want to find out what the target completion date of the opening of it, so they'll say, finally, it's long overdue. And also too, for Josh, what he says for DART, want to give kudos to that because transit is the answer, especially for the fiscal cliff that's coming in late 2025 going into 2026, because we certainly need transit, especially we need for those who can't afford a car. So transit is certainly is the answer with DART. So want to give kudos to you, Josh, for doing it for that. And also with you, Mayor Bozen, being on the commissioners too, doing the, give kudos to you also. So that's all I have to say, and if, I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments if anybody has anything to say.
We will check on that for you, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
I like that logo. Transit is the answer. Jacqueline, or sorry, George McKeever. George, is George here?
My name is George McKeever, and I'm a longtime resident at 1911 39th Street. My wife and I have been in Ward 1 for, this is our 23rd year. The last three years, I've started my retirement. In retirement, a person is able to notice a little more about their, the people they know, their friends, their, their family, and what's going on. I... I recently had a luncheon out with seven friends last Friday, and it reiterated to me that I needed to step up and ask you to reconsider funding for that Environmental Sustainability Task Force. Why? Because it's a public health issue, and if, as I did, looking around at the stories of our families and our friends, it is obvious that cancer is one of the items taking over this state. And last Friday, I was sitting among seven people. We ordinarily meet once a month, maybe 10 of us. There were seven this time. And the person to my right has lost her longtime partner. I've known him for some 15 years. He, he passed away two years ago, throat cancer, and he had a nodule in his lungs, and he had emphysema. At my table, right across from me, was another woman. Her husband was at home. We learned with her being there at this time that they have decided, really, he has decided to stop treatment for his cancer, and that means he stopped radiation, he stopped chemotherapy. This was quite a surprise to us, but some friends know this person, this couple more than I do. But that was just the person in front of me. And then right next to, one of the three people missing was a person who was a cancer survivor about maybe three years ago. Now she is having to have spinal surgery, and to have the spinal surgery, to be prepared for it, she has to go lots of physical therapy. So those therapy sessions have kept her schedule unknown, so she wasn't able to attend. A strong woman, and just when I got home, I thought about what I'd heard that day with the people with their cancer in their family, right in our family, with these seven people, really 10. And we know that we need clean water, we need clean air in Iowa. So I recommend the Iowa Cancer Registry's information that came out a month ago. We are Iowa, the second nation for new cases of cancer out of 50 states. And out of the 50 states, there's only two states whose cancer rate is actually growing, and we're one of those two states. What are we going to do about that? Start straight, right here in our city.
Is Jacqueline here?
My name is Jackie, and I am proud to be a first-time homeowner and resident at 1106 Elder Lane on Ward 3, resident of a beautiful, resident and homeowner of a beautiful old one-bathroom house in the heart of the so-called motivational dead zone in Des Moines. Please vote no on Mr. Bukey's proposal, which is full of fear mongering, thank you for saying so, in service of promoting a pie-in-the-sky plan that hopes private investors will boost tax revenue, but not until after the city has taken on substantial risk and debt to demolish a great number of our city's affordable houses. Please vote no, because while he labels affordable starter homes as albatrosses, for first-time house buyers, they are lifelines that are far too scarce. Even if large numbers accept buyouts, it is unrealistic to think we can buy another house with the compensation. The plan would deny many hopeful homeowners one of the most accessible paths to build wealth in our country. And if you do that, your legacy will be skyrocketing wealth inequality in our city. You will also displace renters, usually lower-income families, offering them zero compensation or choice, and throwing their lives into upheaval, stress, and often debt. Mr. Bukey refers to Des Moines as a Goldilocks market due to its affordability, but his plan, which specifically calls to keep only one-third of the city's 45,000 most affordable houses, affordable, would move home ownership further out of reach. Many first-time buyers need small houses to build equity before they can afford a large one. Removing this first rung of the ladder for Des Moines residents would simply make it harder to afford a house. This plan looks devastating to the finances and stability of middle and working-class families. If I'm wrong, and I hope I'm wrong, please provide data showing how this plan helps more Des Moines residents achieve the American dream rather than locking us out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Maher.
My name is Carol Maher, and I live in downtown Des Moines in Ward 3. Mayor Bozen, members of city council, thank you. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for your recommendation last week during the budget work session and your concurrence tonight to start the process to approve the 2.5% franchise fee to help stabilize the DART system. Thank you. Thank you from the people who ride DART to get to work, school, doctor's appointments, sporting events, buy groceries, hit the thrift shops and bars, visit family and friends, go to our parks and pools, come to city council to testify or protest at the Capitol. Thank you. And thank you for me, a year-round, near-daily bicycle rider who rides the DART in times of extreme cold or rain. Sure, I own a car, but it's a 15-minute walk uphill, both ways, to get to the park-and-ride where I store it. When it's cold, the bus stop across the street from my apartment is much more inviting than that walk. Last week, I had to deal with a dead battery twice in one trip to a doctor's appointment in a faraway suburb. That was the tipping point for me to go car-free. That's right. I'm selling my car, and I'm going to live a full, active life in the Des Moines metro without one. Oh, the horror, is it possible? So if anyone is interested in a 2020 Toyota Camry Hybrid that gets 46 miles per gallon and has 21,500 miles on it, talk to me after the meeting. So yes, thank you for moving forward with the process to approve the 2.5% franchise fee. Those of us who choose to live a car-free lifestyle greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Understood?
I'll move to receiving file 57A through I.
It's been moved in second. Please vote. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At least note the word.